Fourth, 2020, we'll call to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Stephen will put up the flag and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is the establishment of the regular agenda. Are there any changes to the regular agenda?
There are none.
Great, thank you. So we only have one item on this, for this meeting, and it is in regards to an update on reopening the schools to in-person hybrid learning. You'll notice that there's no action taken by the board. Last night, the Issaquah Education Association took a vote to ratify an MOU that was agreed upon between the Issaquah School District and the Issaquah Education Association. That vote then ratified that MOU, so that MOU is now ratified. And so that will be our next step towards getting schools open. So I wanted to begin with the district to be able to share that information. And then we will go into public comment. And again, I'm going to do about 16 minutes, so let's hear from about six or seven people. And I wanted to hear people's thoughts either on advocating beyond this MOU and what next steps are. So if you see beyond this MOU, meaning once you hear the discussions, any thoughts or questions or information that you have around the implementation of the MOU in your thoughts? So again, it's not going to be the public comment, and I'll go through this further, is input, not output. And then we'll also, for any next steps beyond this MOU. So with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Thiele to share a bit about what this update is.
Thank you, President Meraldo. And as everyone just heard President Meraldo say, I am happy to report that we have reached an agreement with the Issaquah Education Association on an MOU that uses our county's positive COVID-19 positive COVID-19 test rates as a metric that triggers the hybrid return to in-person learning for our K-3 students, those students in grades kindergarten through third grade. I do want to note that the remote option will remain as an option during this time as well for those families that choose that. I want to acknowledge and thank the ISD and the IEA bargaining teams. And specifically, I would like to call out and acknowledge the bargaining team leads, Executive Director Natalie Fowler and Issaquah Education Association President Dorana Bergholder. I really am so appreciative of the work that these two individuals and their teams did. This pandemic has created so many unique and challenging situations for us to contemplate and problem solve together. And I personally am very pleased with the hard work and collaboration of our bargaining teams. Now our staff and community can collectively monitor the positive COVID case rate and know that when, once that rate drops below 5% and stays there for seven days, we'll start bringing our K-1 students back, followed by our second and third grade students after that. And I, that's, that's a very important step that has been taken. I also want to point out all the really good work these teams did in terms of the health and safety protocols, which is something so different from our normal topics of bargaining. And, and something that I know has been an issue of concern, not just for teachers and our support staff and administrators, but many in our community as well. And a lot of really good work went into those protocols and understanding what's needed in terms of our proto, our personal protective equipment and, and how we would move through students through a school and make school happen. So a lot of really good work there. We'll be sending out, I, we did send out an e-news earlier this afternoon just to make sure that everybody in our community who receives those knew that we had accomplished this goal. And, but we also know that that was intentionally a relatively brief message. There's a lot of detail in this memorandum of understanding. And we know that we need, we'll do a follow-up communication early next week with more of the details of this MOU. And ultimately, like we do all of these, we'll post it on our website, the MOU itself. We all know there's still a lot of work ahead for us as we continue to collaborate and problem solve the issues that we need to address related to our students and providing some form of in-person services to our K-12 students, frankly, that need additional supports that, and that we believe would benefit from some type of in-person contact with educators. We also know we must start to collaborate on matters related to the COVID-19 vaccination, which is thankfully coming soon. And, and we should all feel very good that we get to start having those conversations. But that will be important as we move forward as well. So the bottom line is, these teams have worked really hard since last spring. They have negotiated several MOUs together as it relates to those students that are currently receiving in-person services and putting together a plan for more students in the future to receive in-person services. So again, I have a lot of gratitude. And there's still a lot, as I said, a lot of details and work that needs to happen going forward. And we've already got sessions scheduled for that work to, to begin. But I, I just again, wanted to share my appreciation to our bargaining team and to the association's bargaining teams. I mean, we are one school system after all, and I just really appreciate the way that we are working together on that. We do have President Meraldo some updates on, on other COVID-related things as well. I, I don't, I didn't want to lose that. We've been, based on conversations that we've had, the school board has had with myself and staff. And I thought maybe I would ask Dr. Allmey just to kind of give a brief update on some of the other progress that we've made in some, some aspects of ways that we can better serve our community. So Dr. Allmey, if you could just kind of provide that update about our, some of our athletic pods and things like that.
Shaky internet connection, so hopefully you can hear me.
We, we can now, yes.
Okay, great. First of all, this week, excited, this past Wednesday, we started our athletic pods. And I know that I received some contacts from some coaches that I know that were very excited to start that. So those five-person athletic pods outside have started at our high schools this week. So that's one exciting piece of information. Nextly, we're also opening up our outdoor facilities to rentals with our community groups. So that has just begun as well. We have also made our playgrounds accessible to families and whatnot. So that is a new piece as well. And we also are on, have ongoing conversations with the city of Issaquah. The city of Issaquah Parks and Rec Department is putting together a, a plan, if allowable by the governor in King County, for an elementary basketball pod league in January. Right now, that does not meet the, does not meet the letter of the law as far as the governor's directive. But we are meeting with them. And once that indoor facilities are allowed, we're looking forward to partnering with our, the city of Issaquah to see if we can support them in that endeavor as well. One more thing, we are going to be launching our engagement survey next week to all of our parents and our students and our teachers. So a lot of work has been put into that. We've just finished up translating those surveys. So those will go out next week. Look for an e-news on that. And then lastly, I'd like to turn it over to Executive Director Donna Hood. She and the activities coordinators have done a lot of work and are continuing to do a lot of work about clubs and pods and outdoor pods and clubs. And that work is ongoing. So Donna, maybe you can update folks about where we are with that.
Sure, yeah. Our high school clubs have been active virtually. So we have at the two larger high schools, between 40 and 44 active clubs. And at our smaller high school, it's about 16 sort of interest clubs, if you will, plus the co-curriculars. And we just recently, the ACs and I worked up a really great interest survey they sent out to figure out which of the advisors might have some interest in doing in-person meetings. Got about 38 responses or so. We know folks obviously are busy with their regularly assigned duties, so we're giving them a touch more time to respond. And we think we'll have most answers by mid to late week, next week. And then we can start looking at the numbers. We want to make sure that as we schedule, we find appropriate spaces and do our best to, to keep our pods spaced apart. And so we'll, we'll base it on that. We are also asking how many times the advisors might want to meet. There may be reasons to meet once a month. There may be reasons to meet once a week. So we, we wanted to make sure we gave them some range and some options, and that'll help us too, I think, in our planning. We expect not everyone will choose the same thing. And that'll help us, I think, manage our spaces and our social distancing and all that good business. Next up, we meet to revise the training that the ADs use with coaches so that it's appropriate for club advisors. And we'll probably offer a training before and after the break, I expect.
Thank you, Donna. And one more thing, Superintendent Thiele, before I hand it back to you. This is, doesn't have anything to do with athletic pods and clubs and facilities and whatnot, but something that we just started last night, our Boundary Review Committee kicked off last night. Thank you CFO Cooper for helping me facilitate that process. Forty committee persons, strong and extensive technical team as well. Go to the website, click on Boundary Review, lots of information there. And we'll keep you posted through every, every step of the way. That committee will meet and hopefully wrap things up in the early part of February.
So you got in a commercial for the Boundary Review Committee. Nice job there, Deputy Superintendent.
Each committee will livestream on our YouTube channel. Check it out. It's, it's better than American Idol.
I, I did also want to allow CFO Cooper to speak briefly to something that actually Director Gallagher had brought to our attention about a application process that we're involved in to hopefully be able to have some vaccine centers here within our district. So Jake, could you kind of just provide an overview on what that is and what, you know, where we're at in that process as well?
Oh yeah, thank you Superintendent. And I believe Dr. Gallagher would also be of assistance in part of this as well. So we're fortunate enough to have a physician on our board who reached out, Superintendent, myself, with the knowledge and ability of how to file an app, potentially an application with the State Department of Health to be a vaccination center. And then we've reached out to several of our labor partners, and they would be in support of the, at least the application itself. And that application, I think, is due on Monday. So myself and Dr. Gallagher, Superintendent Thiele will need to finish that up and file that. And potentially, as I understand it, that is one avenue of is a significant, like 175,000 doses, I recall, set aside for K, K-12 to begin with in the first shipment. So we will see if we have a successful applicant. And in that case, our vaccinations may be available to our employees.
Thank you, Jake. And I, I don't know if Dr. Gallagher has anything he wanted to add on that part. And I know there'll be a lot of board discussion coming up as well. So that's, that's what I wanted to share, President Meraldo. Again, I just wanted to give my gratitude to our teams for the work that they've done because I know it's been challenging. It's important work. And again, I'm very appreciative of that. And I think that this is a positive step and something that will allow our community. You know, a lot of, including the ISD, we started by putting dates out. The problem with that, as I learned, was you never know what the virus is going to be doing at a specific time. So I appreciate the work of the teams to move towards a metric that we could monitor, that we can feel confident about. And I think that there's good language in this MOU as well because both sides agreed that once you get classes of students in, you don't want to be whipsawing them in and out. And so there's some good language around that that will help us keep kids in and, and staff in once we are able to get them in when the virus rates go down in our community. So thank you for that time. And then, of course, we're here for any questions that the, the board has, President Meraldo.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to reiterate before we go into public comment that, so the, the major portion of the negotiations that had happened most recently was really, and what we talked about at our last board meeting, was around what those metrics might be. And so what was agreed upon is essentially the decision tree. And when Superintendent Thiele talks about not whipsawing the key kids back and forth and in and out of class, in, in and out of in-person, that is really predicated mostly on the work of the King County public health toolkit that is provided to schools. So we will continue to utilize that, utilizing the COVID staff members that will be in each building. So really taking into account that we are not the decision makers for public health, that we are relying on public health in the decision-making. And so that is why the utilization of the decision tree by the Washington State Department of Health and the toolkit provided by Public Health of Seattle, King County. And so I think that's really important information to give. We'll have more information on our website. And I do want to give a measure of grace to our brand-new Executive Director of Communications. We've lived without one since June, and so there is a lot of backup work that needs to be done. But we do hope to have some of this information that's really readable for the public is going to be key. So it's not a huge wall of text, although we will make the MOU publicly available, like all our MOUs are. That will be able to provide something that's a little bit easier for families to understand because how does this impact you? I did want to clarify one thing around that is that, around the MOU is that we're looking for seven days of under 5% rate, positivity rate for seven days. At that point, the announcement will go out that we will be opening up the schools, but it has to go for another seven days during that process time after that announcement. So it ends up being a total of 14 days. But after seven days, we will make the announcement that we'll be heading back to school in seven days. And so that, again, is really giving us good, solid data of 14 consecutive days of under 5%. Hopefully, what I think is important for me is that families feel confident that we are doing all we need to do to protect our staff and our students because I know there is still concern around our families sending their children back. And so we want not only to have this agreement to enable our teachers to feel safe, we want our families to feel safe as well. And so that's really what that is. So again, as I reiterated earlier, I know several people have come into the meeting since my initial statement. We did, the district did negotiate with the Issaquah Education Association who rat, who ratified the MOU based on a vote. So that MOU has been ratified, so there is no action on part of the board. So that is a ratified MOU. So our comment time, and again, I do want to reiterate, like I've done if you've been to past meetings, that this is input to the board, not output. Sometimes that can feel really unwelcoming or like you're not being listened to. But please know that we do listen to all the public information. This is a special meeting of the board, so we have a truncated amount of public input. But that does not stifle your ability to share your information and your thoughts with the board. You are always welcome to email us. In fact, I'd like to ask staff to put that email address in the chat box so that you have that. We read every single one of them, and many of you write very long letters. But we do read those because we want to know your thoughts. So again, wanted to reiterate that. And at this point, we are going to be taking 16 minutes, approximately 16 minutes, about seven community members to give us comments specific to the implementation of this MOU. And this MOU covers kindergarten through third grade. So for the next 16, approximate 16 minutes, I'd like to hear from those that are interested in providing comments specific to the implementation of this MOU. And so I see four hands raised. And so I will begin calling on those. First up, I have only identified as Dina. I will need your full name and the area within the district that you live, if you can identify a school or a high school feeder pattern. So Dina, you are first up. And staff may have to provide you the ability to show your camera and your microphone.
But I turned you guys off.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted, and here comes my camera.
And you'll have approximately two minutes.
Okay, okay. Are we on?
You are.
Okay. My name is Dina Rataisak. I have kids at Maywood and at Liberty. Illusory, when you commit to doing something that you know you'll never have to do. That's what the teachers have committed to do with this latest MOU, an illusory agreement. Thank God ratified MOUs are not legally binding because Issaquah School District needs to throw this one away and come to the table with a plan that will actually get our kids into the classroom. The teachers' union is leveraging metrics that are designed to instill fear for the purpose of keeping our kids out of school. But of course, all of this misses the point, which is that kids being in school bears no correlation to transmission rates. So here's my question for the school board and for Superintendent Thiele. And I know you can't answer, but this is what I want to leave you with. I'm going to speak slowly and clearly for emphasis because this is important. Do you honestly believe that this MOU that is tied to a metric that neither has any bearing on community transmission rate nor is likely to dip below the threshold anytime soon will result in all of our children, all of our children, returning to in-person learning in a timely manner? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Candace Birdy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi there. While I here and I've been participating in these board meetings for the last several months, you know, I'm not, I'm not taking any of this as good news. I got to be completely honest. What I'm really concerned about is the elephant in the room, which is our fourth through 12th grade learners. How are we measuring learning gaps? You know, we're, we're calling it remote learning, but I, I put learning in parentheses because I think that has not been addressed, how, how we're measuring learning, how we're going to address these gaps, when and if our kids get back to school at all in the next seven months. And I would challenge the district to share with the parents in transparent ways how they're going to address these gaps. If, is there going to be enough funding next school year to address these gaps? Private school deadlines are looming next month and then a month after. And based on the slowness that this has all taken to get where we are now, which I'm not even confident in, parents can't be held hostage anymore. They need to be able to make up their mind and put their kids where they know they're going to get actual in-person learning that is happening all around us. And I'm just frankly, really disappointed. I know that, I feel like people are applauding themselves for the work that's been done, but I don't really take this as a win. So just being honest. Hope we can do better.
Thank you. Next I have J.C. Prescott.
Hi.
Hi, I can hear you. I can't see you.
Okay. It says the host hasn't enabled my video yet.
And I can't do that because it. There we go.
My video's not working.
See that she's blocked.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, my name is J.C. and I'm a current eighth grader at Maywood Middle School. I think it's very important during these times to get me and thousands of other students back into the schools as soon as possible. As a teen student athlete, it's so important for our wellbeing to have social interactions at school and most importantly, have a greater quality of our education and learning. Online school is more than just sitting at the computer daily on classes. To a lot of us, it's spending hours after school working on assignments and classwork that we're not understanding due to the lack of engagement and teaching through a screen. At this point, I feel like it's more about getting good scores rather than learning.
Great, thank you. Next I have Marina Subaya.
Hi, thank you. Marina Subaya, I have a child at Maple Hills Elementary. And just wanted to sort of throw my voice into what people have already said. This doesn't, grateful there is an agreement, but it doesn't really feel like progress. Actually, the metrics of a 5% positivity rate, the first time we hit that was back in early May. So by the metrics that have just been agreed to, our certain, our students, K through three should have been in school since mid-May. And that metric didn't rise above, our positive positivity rate did not rise above 5% until the first week of November. So it's very convenient timing to agree to such a metric when it will now be months until these kids are back in school. And they technically, by these agreed-upon metrics, should have been in school from the first day of this year in addition to last May. So it's just really disappointing. It feels like an empty gesture. And it, I just don't even know what else to do at this point. It's Superintendent Wright, all the same, the system isn't working. The schools in our community, our state, our nation are open at much higher rates they have been. It's just feels like a hopeless battle that, that reason and data are not really part of anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Carrie Kiefer.
Hi, I'm Carrie Kiefer. I have a freshman and a junior at Issaquah High School. In the name of progress, I am glad that an MOU has been agreed upon. However, it is simply not enough to only focus on four grades out of 13. The summary that I read on a Facebook page today basically outlined the notion in this MOU that it will be impossible to get the older grades back this school year. I can tell you that if you think participation, engagement, and failing grades are a problem now, this detailed plan to actually keep the upper levels out of the buildings is going to cause them to simply give up. The amount of time it took to get this agreement is devastating and riddled in politics. We need this district to act with a sense of urgency for every single student, not just the youngest learners. This district is failing the group of students who have the least amount of time to make up the deficit caused by last spring and this fall. They are taking standardized tests, whether you believe it or not, and these scores matter. Entire math units are being skipped at IHS because the teacher says it is too hard to teach online. That should be really great come SAT time or when the math builds upon for next year. The Spanish department is getting through half of the units compared to previous years. These kids are applying to colleges and they are being compared to kids from across the country, the majority of whom are back in person. There's no comparison at this point. ISD's slow-moving wait-and-see approach is costing our students the futures they have once seen for themselves. I am appalled at the number of people in this community who are literally asking ISD to ignore a huge percentage of students in this district. The teachers are advocating for themselves, so I am here to advocate for my children. And I will not stop because them not being given a meaningful education during these four high school years is unacceptable, and the board should absolutely feel the same. You are placing the kids with the most to lose in the shortest amount of time dead last. The amount of time it took to get to this agreement and the amount of time it will take to follow these parameters is simply not going to work. Get our high schoolers back into the buildings, should they choose to do so, because they have already lost far too much time. Stop using arbitrary metrics to fit the narrative. It is the job of this district to educate every single student right now. And there may be a lot of teaching going on, but there is very little learning.
Thank you. Next I have Diana Goldberg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Hi. So I am also a parent of two Issaquah High School students, also a junior and a freshman. We know that remote learning is a disaster for most high school students. We keep hearing about how many kids are failing, the number of Fs that exist in our district and others. And since the elementary school grades, don't they get number grades, not letter grades? That is specific to middle and high school students. The part of, this part of the student population has been all but left out of negotiations and conversations to have the option to return to in-person learning. But again, as been stated before, they have the most to lose and the least amount of time to make up the deficit that is not their doing. Their future educations and their ability to start careers, to make a living is dramatically impacted and in jeopardy. And that is because they have not been included in the, in the conversations and they're not included in the MOU. It is, it's not addressing any of them. So here's my question to the district. As a parent, I have heard absolutely no plans with what the district plans to do for these students to mitigate this learning deficit and the issues that they're going, that they're having. What's the plan for their SAT scores to bring them up to grade level, to where they should be and they deserve to be? And in order to compete with students from across the country for college admissions and for, for jobs? Are they going to be offered another year of high school eligibility to repeat this year? Are grades going to be wiped out or leveled up or pass fail like other districts have done? What are we going to do for this part of the population? Because if it truly, if they have zero option to get back in the buildings, which I find absolutely unacceptable and a failure on the adults in this situation, we have to do something to help them. This is the part of the population who is struggling the most with depression, mental health, suicide, overdoses. And we, it is our job as the adults in this situation to do something powerful and help them out and get them back into the building and mitigate the damage that's being done to their futures. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Stephanie Brown. Okay. Stephanie Brown, lower their hand. Mary Segesta.
Hello, my name is Mary Segesta and I'm a parent of a freshman at Issaquah High School. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
You turn on my video.
There you go.
There I am. Hello. I'm a parent of a freshman at Issaquah High School. Thank you for this ongoing communication that you're having with us. I've been attending many of these school board meetings, listening in, but I have not spoken until now. While I appreciate the MOU, as many of the other participants have mentioned, it is an empty vessel of an opportunity to get the kids back to school. With each board meeting, I continue to hear all of you comment on how well the teachers are doing and how they're working to create a suitable environment. While I have no doubt that many of the teachers are, I have yet to hear you speak about the students' experiences. School, after all, is about the student. It doesn't matter how great your teachers are doing if your students are not learning. And in my house, my student is not learning. This is unfortunate because as a freshman, she's in the prime of her academic journey. And this next four years will set her up for a future of continued education. As a technology worker myself, it pains me to continue this distance learning because I continue to read about, witness, hire and engage with high school students who are developing new technologies and forming businesses in their high school science rooms with their science teachers. It is their teachers who've inspired them and encouraged them and driven their curiosity for learning. And yet it appears the Issaquah School District has forgotten about all of our students and has abandoned their learning. This is evident yet again by this Turn On Your Camera video campaign that was released by IHS in their SEL classes past week. If that video was meant for the teachers to be silly with fuzzy boas and, and big sunglasses, it was great. But if it was meant for the students, it completely missed its mark. And this is just basic marketing. Now, I have a question for all of you at the school board and I want you to take my question seriously. And that is, have you thought about thinking outside the box in making in-school person, in-person school happen? The Issaquah School District has the good fortune of being in a very area-rich demographic with very successful small businesses and large corporations who employ many smart people. Have you given thought to partnering with these local businesses to leverage their resources to come to your school and proctor in-person classes or even teach if the teachers are willing, unwilling to come? I would volunteer in a heartbeat if it meant my student could be in the classroom with other students. You wouldn't have to pay me because I'm paid by my employer and I would not join a union ever. And the teachers could then come back to the school whenever they're ready and you can put in your COVID testing sites on campus or nearby within the Issaquah community.
Can you wrap up here at three minutes?
I'm almost done. While I take the virus seriously, I have every confidence I can act responsibly and the school district can act responsibly, take necessary precautions. The mental illness and depression and isolation and the loss of four student lives is far too great of a price to pay for a virus that has a 97 to 99.75 recovery rate per the CDC. So Dr. Thiele, this is your Ronald Reagan air traffic controller strike moment. You can either choose to lead or you can choose to cower. And if you choose to lead, I will be right there with you by your side, ensuring it's success with the Washington Health State Department. If you choose to cower, then I have to make other different decisions for my child's education, my tax dollars and my vote with the school bonds and the elected school officials.
Okay, you're at four minutes now.
Drastic situations require drastic action. Sometimes the right thing to do is the unpopular thing to do. True leaders lead by doing the right thing. Do the right thing and bring the students back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. I had asked for this portion to be about comments about the implementation of this MOU, but since all the comments except for one were about the comments about items beyond the MOU, I'm going to let the remaining three people speak and then that will be it. So I have Sebastian Lindman and Satori, and I don't know the full name there, and then Mary McGuire Brown. And after those three, we'll be complete. So Sebastian, you're next. And we have heard from you multiple times, so I'm hoping you provide us new information.
You there?
Yes.
Hi. You know, actually, no, I was actually coming tonight to actually say, you know, thank you for the teachers' union for doing a nice job of coming up with the board and working with the board to come up with a nice science-based plan. I mean, it might not be ideal and it definitely shows progress, I think, which is what the community needs to see. And I think that putting some numbers down, good job. And I'm actually very happy to see that you guys were able to come up with that. And again, the fact that it's based on science and, you know, actual metrics, that makes sense. And, you know, it makes me more comfortable because my child is actually in that group of kids. What does scare me still to this very moment is when people are taking trips, vacations, you know, just watching my kids' class and seeing how many people are going out of town, leaving the state, flying on airplanes with their kids, coming back. And then what are we going to do about that? I mean, what's the situation for parents that jump on airplanes, come back if we do open up? And, you know, are their kids going to be quarantined for 14 days? Are we going to have some sort of, you know, way of dealing with that? Because I know flying to Hawaii and things like that, getting on a plane. Right now, if you look at the CDC's information, a plane is, you know, not the most unsafe situation, but the airport and all the different places you go after that. If we could just come up with something like that, I think that would help us a lot. I also think that, you know, as a whole, right now, the kids are learning. I think some of this is parents need to understand that kids won't do things if you don't work with them and motivate them. And as a whole, I don't think we can just blame this on the superintendent. I don't think we can blame this on teachers. I think that parents need to kind of bear down a little bit and work with their kids and figure it out. And now knowing what the numbers are with this metric, I really would hope the board could focus on making the online learning and the distance learning better for the kids. One of the scary things I did learn is, you know, there's going to be a lot less kids per classroom. So those who stay on distance learning will probably be in classes with a lot more people than those who actually do the hybrid option, which feels like it's taking away from us working with the two systems. I think it would be better if it was equal. But I would really like to have the board now focus because we have this plan with coming up with a positive steps we can take to make the online process better for these kids till we can get them back to the hybrid option. Because we've spent so much time talking about this now and the numbers just keep going up and they're not going to go down. With the holidays, people are not going to stay home. It's obvious, you can look into it, people are moving around the country. Now what we should focus on is take our energies, say, hey, we are making progress. I didn't hear anybody say anything about the progress you guys are making tonight other than the board members, other than superintendent. Thank you for making progress. Thank you for working with the teachers. Thank you for the teachers for coming up with a compromise. Now let's all work together to improve what we have to work with until we get to this metric. That should be our focus. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. And, and Satori, you were here just a moment ago.
Yes. Hold on here. Uh oh, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
You can't see me? And it says unable to start video.
Here.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Hi. Thanks for having this meeting. And I, again, just want to say I can imagine the hard work that everybody is doing. And I'm a mom of three. I've got twins at PCMS and a fifth grader that just moved into sixth grade at PCMS. And I just, I have just been really asking my friends to step up. A lot of people want to complain about the kids not being back in school. And yeah, I think people are really scared to advocate for the aftermath. And I think what I've been seeing at my house lately, if you would have asked me two months ago how homeschooling was going, I would have said, oh, it's fine and I'm a therapist. And so I'm trying to work. I'm working with a lot of kids that are having depression, anxiety, not coming out of their rooms. And then in my own personal life, you know, my kids aren't necessarily getting dressed in the morning. They're done school, like on Wednesday it was announcing National Apple Fritter Day. And as a parent, it like breaks my heart to see my three kids experiencing what's happening. And we're from Canada and in Canada, teachers are an essential service and they are literally haven't missed a day of school. And, and so I just wonder why and how we can provide this education for our kids to support them in their mental health. And I also have my son Jack, who is a eighth grader. And so he would just like to share because I could do it for him, but I think it's, I told him it's really important that I would like him to hear, or you guys to hear what he has to say. But whatever we can do to get these kids back in school, I will volunteer. I will do it all clean. I'll do whatever it takes for the community and all of us at large. So here's Jack.
Thank you.
Say, Jack.
Hello, Jack.
I'm enrolled at PCMS. I'm an eighth grader. In isolation, it's really bugging our friend group and friends that are around me and people. And like I'm an Xbox pressure hat every night and it's, it's just killing kids. Like there'll be friends that are just complaining, complaining about isolation. And kids aren't even really waking up for school. They're just logging on and going straight back to sleep. Also, I play football and they're making pods like, so I play FSP and there's seven, eight hundred kids in the program and they're all making little, they're all like pods. And I don't see why we can do that at school. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. Oh yeah, and private school, we're already looking at private schools to enroll in. And because I don't, we don't see like a plan that is being made. And we're also getting worried. And we're also looking at places to stay in Canada because school is actually happening there and they're making further learning points, if you know what I mean. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. From the Babwins, thank you so much. And again, I know this is really difficult, but I know that you have a million parents that will do whatever we can to have our kids back.
Thank you. Okay, and last but not least, Mary McGuire Brown.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hi, my name is Mary McGuire Brown and I have a third grader at Newcastle Elementary and I have two middle schoolers at Maywood, a sixth grader and an eighth grader. And I just want to say that our teachers have been doing an amazing job with the kids. That's not the problem. It's the sitting in front of the screen all day long. My third grader is doing amazingly academically, but at the end of his, just his mental wellbeing and just his demeanor, it's heartbreaking to see how he's just breaking inside from doing all of this. My sixth grader had to start middle school like this and she does great online, she interacts. But the thought of her being one-on-one with a teacher or having to submit a test is extreme anxiety and stress. And she just melts down and meet, she holds it all together during the day, but then lets it all out every night. And my eighth grader is the one that I want to point out the most. He's getting ready to go to high school where the grades are going to matter even more. He has a four, 504 plan for moderate ADHD. We've had to increase his medication already. And I don't, that, that's not going to help the situation. But I just had to review his plan and I look at the parts of his plan and there's very little that you can even do with online learning. It's, it's just not working. He stood up and looked at me two weeks ago with a glossy look in his eye and said, "Mom, I just cannot learn like that." Now, my son is, as I said, it's moderate, we're handling it, but it's almost a full-time job. There are so many kids out there who have extreme ADHD and other disabilities that are inhibiting them from learning or are home alone and don't have a parent like me. And those kids really need to get back. I, we hear that the K through three is going back at some point, we hope. We hear high schoolers get to go out for pods, but I'm not hearing anything about what the middle schoolers get to do. And they're really isolated, just as everyone else. And I feel like, great, we have one MOU in place, but tomorrow we need to be back there coming up with what the plan will be as soon as we get K through three back because we, we can't just keep waiting. If there's one thing I have learned through all of this is that learning is absolutely essential and teachers should be considered essential. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for public comments. So I did want to open it up to the board to have our discussion around the general topic of reopening of schools into in-person hybrid learning. And don't all raise your hand at once.
Marnie, I did just want to respond briefly to one of the people who made a comment that we should be focusing more on making online learning better because I don't want people to think that the district can only do one thing at a time. And I know that teaching and learning has been doing quite a bit of work on working with the teachers to try to make online learning better. So I just wanted to throw, throw that out there that it may not be getting a lot of publicity right now. And perhaps the superintendent can speak to it more, but I know that there is work going on. Or correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure there's work going on.
Director Weaver, you are absolutely correct. I know that Executive Director Malish and his team are constantly working with teachers, our teachers on special assignments that support our teaching and learning department, our educational tech department. We, we at the head planning level are constantly having conversations. And as you are aware, we have an engagement survey that will be going out next week. Part of that is so we can gain, gain more information about what's not working well, what's working well, how engaged students are. And, you know, and I know, for example, there was reference made to something Issaquah High had sent out to try to encourage students to turn their cameras on. I've seen some other things that have been done like that by individual teachers. And, and I, I recognize some of these things might not hit the mark. I think we just got to keep trying things. And we will continue to work to refine our ISD Live remote learning as much as, as possible. You know, because we recognize for You know, because we recognize for many students, that will be their primary mode of receiving instruction. So we haven't, you know, we can do both of those things, things simultaneously. However, the focus in our negotiations and all of that has been on our in-person return efforts.
Okay, Harlan, you, I see you unmuted.
I just wanted to say first of all, Ron, thank you to Natalie Fowler and your team. And my hat goes off to her and the countless hours that she has dedicated to this and to carry forward the work of our board superintendent team that's been unified in our desire to provide the best learning opportunity for our students, which we know is in person. So thank you. I will say for me, there are four things that I look at that I need to see in addition to this MOU before we return to school that I think that representing the community that we need to have action on. One, I think that our website needs to immediately have not only the test positivity for King County, but continue to have a local case rate as well as an acknowledgement of the CDC risk mitigation strategies for educational settings, which is really our PPE supply. Like our community and parents and teachers need to know that we either have it or we don't. Two, I think that we need to have a data dashboard. I know you've heard that from us before. But that, that needs to be out there, whether or not it has to be all as district-wide right now in order to for FERPA or HIPAA reasons. But that needs to start immediately. So our community can see that we're having, which is currently zero epidemiologically linked cases. But we inevitably will have cases and we know that we recognize that in, in your staff has done a tremendous job with our risk mitigation strategies. But we want to make sure that our community, both our teachers, our staff and our parents know that we're going to transparently communicate that. And so we need to start that now so that that's in place and ready. And we're not scrambling to have that in place when we start having cases. Three, I didn't see an MOU and maybe I missed it. But I think it's going to be really, really important that we create bubbles in our elementary schools that when we do bring back those students, that those buildings need to close to any adult. Because we know the risk is really with our adults who isn't teaching K three or when it starts K one. I know that we've encouraged teachers in wanting to have the technology in their classrooms to be able to teach from home. But I think that that transition discussion needs to happen so that there aren't adults at all in our buildings. Like that's part of the risk mitigation to not have anyone in there who's not, doesn't need to be there in order for us to make sure that we can ensure that we don't have any epidemiologically linked cases. Like we don't want a fifth grade teacher who's teaching in the building, in their classroom to happen to mingle in the break room or work room with a third grade teacher who's actually doing in-person learning. And then we have to close down. So those are things that we have control and that would be what, what would be recommended. And lastly, I know months ago, we had had lengthy discussions with LabCorp about having an expedited COVID testing for staff. And if IEA doesn't want to participate, I'm not here to twist their arm. But IEA represents only 50% of our staff in our district. And on behalf of our bus drivers, our office workers, our paraprofessionals, we need to have an expedited COVID testing program. We've seen through this current case rise that three days is just too long. So when LabCorp could commit to us having it within roughly 24 hours, there is no reason why we shouldn't have that opportunity for our staff. So those would be the four things that I would like to see that would, I think, build greater trust in both from our both staff and community and parent standpoint as we move towards opening.
Yeah, thank you for that, Director Gallinger. And I do want the community to know that we do now have a new Executive Director of Communications and Digital Strategies. And we are going to be doing a refresh on our COVID information on the website, including a spreadsheet that will show COVID cases in the system and and pushing forward a lot, pushing the forward. Some of the information is in there right now that I think related to our code, our mitigation strategies and our protocols. We need to add information about some of our PP and E inventories and things like that. But we recognize that that website needs a refresh and that work is in progress. And we will absolutely reengage with LabCorp going forward. And so, yeah, and, and we captured, I've captured those four points. And, and I, I want you to know those, those things we were already working on. And I look forward to the community having a refreshed and better data at their fingertips as it relates to, as it relates to our COVID mitigation strategies.
And I see Executive Director Leshay, excuse me, Leshay Engles on?
Yes, hi. I'm Leshay Engles, Executive Director of Communications. As you guys know, we kind of started on a new leg of getting communications going again. This week we were able to re-modify the pages. There's a lot of pages that we've modified this past week and are set and they're not published yet. I re-modified the dashboard yesterday. So I just wanted to speak to Dr. Gallinger's points that those are all works in progress and we will get them published next week. So they are, it's happening. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. We are excited to have you in that spot and I hope that I will finally get your name. Leshay is our principal at Echo Glen and we were talking about that earlier versus Alicia. And I know I'm going to get that wrong forever. So I'm glad I won't be in the president's seats forever. I saw Sydney and then Anne.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm happy we're at this point. I think for me, what I want to talk about a bit is, you know, how do I think about progress? And certainly I've been agitating, speed is something important to me, but clarity is probably even more important. And so what I am very pleased about in the MOU we've talked about tonight is clarity for a significant set of our population is that everyone know, and we have more work to do there to get to more for sure. But I also want to talk about that progress is multi, multi-step. So I am very appreciative of the work. I think what we've asked for, I know I've agitated around is this idea of coming together, walking down a path and coming to an outcome that we can get behind and, and give a level of support and comfort and clarity to this entire school community. And for that, I'm incredibly appreciative. I do see it as a building block, a developing muscle that we'll continue to leverage as we go and do more. But for me, I think it's important to say this, the idea that this is the one and only thing we've been doing is just inaccurate. I think we talk about many topics in this forum over, over different sessions, over our work studies. There's hours and hours of us talking about how do we improve what's happening in the remote learning experience. And we're absolutely seeing that happen day to day. I say that as, again, as a parent of an elementary student and a high school student and looking at how we're using the technology, how we're engaging, how we're making sure the online experience can be better. And so I want to be clear that that happens every day and our teaching and learning staff is working on that. And particularly how do they take best practices and share those broadly. So I think that's an important piece in our toolkit along with the MOU. I think this MOU for K three, I think it's incredibly important what we talked about a bit earlier, which is how are we continuing to look at our facilities? How can we look at bringing in that, bringing together our students at even older grades to have in social interaction? Maybe virtual in a club, but also how do we start to get some sort of in-person pod experience? So those are absolutely in play as well. So again, not ignoring, not ignoring the older grades and the older learners. We've talked in detail about some of our other more at-risk populations that span every grade range, every grade we have. And so certainly we'll talk more about that in upcoming board meetings and the progress we're making. But absolutely work being done at every grade level to make sure we're providing and enhancing the experience, getting and getting the ability to have kids in person and enhance the experience is a, is a great step forward. And I think while we can't be, oh, you know, I don't know that I'm blowing up balloons about it because it's what must be done. I think it has to be marked as a really important milestone that we're demonstrating like very few others, that we can bring together this community and we can agree to something that we can move forward on. So I think for me, like what is progress is really important. So I'm excited about getting deeper into the operations. I don't think tonight's the night for that. I'll stop there.
Director Moore.
All right. Well, thankfully, some of what I wanted to say has already been said, so I won't repeat it because I agree with a lot that's been said before me. I do just want to touch on a couple of things. I know I heard the frustration in some people with the metric. Well, first off, I do appreciate that we have made this agreement and that we do have a metric, that metric that the community can work towards because we actually all know now what it's going to take to get that first batch of full grades into in-person learning. I do recognize that it's a metric that we did meet back in many months, right? But I think one of the things we didn't have then, and it wasn't even in our ability to do yet, was all the health and safety. We hadn't even gotten that, the toolkit from King County until I think August, September timeframe. So some of this also was getting our system ready with all the things that we needed to have in place to have a mitigated classroom with all the protections that we can do in place. So now we have the health and safety, which is detailed in a lot of both the MOU and the toolkit on how we're going to manage our classrooms. We have a metric that we can all work towards and that will start getting our first batch of kids in, the K one. We have a plan after that to get two, three in. But all the while from now forward will be discussions on the things that we can do to get other kids in, whether it's whole grades, whether it is pods. And when we talk about those pods for small groups, for, for kids that need help, the Ds and Fs, we're talking about kids in both, actually probably K-12. But for people that Harris sometimes talk about high school and think middle school is being left out, it's kind of just easier to sometimes refer to one than all the grades. But we're talking about those middle school kids too, and trying to get them connections and back into the schools, even if it's only in the small pod. So I'm so glad we've gotten this MOU done. So the district who is already doing many things can have more focus on those other things because this one is done. And I'm very excited to hear what Jake was talking about as far as having an application into be a vaccine center. I am very eager to have our employees have that opportunity, easy opportunity to get the vaccine because I think that will go a long way towards being able to get our kids back in school at all grade levels. So I'm, I appreciate the work that's being done there.
Suzanne.
Um, I actually wanted to piggyback on what Anne said because she hit a couple of points that I wanted to hit as well, which is, and I, and I do share the frustration of our community of how long it took us to get where we are. At the same time, I'm excited about where we are. One, we have a metric and we have a metric that's consistent with the King County toolkit and the guidance and everything else. It's based on science. We also cannot underestimate the amount of work that went into getting all those safe health and safety pieces nailed down. I talked to someone the other day who works in another district, which shall remain nameless, but one nearby, who was saying, well, yeah, we're working on negotiations with trying to, you know, do these things, but we haven't dealt with the safety stuff yet. And, and that's huge. It's huge for the teacher's peace of mind. It's huge for the parent's peace of mind. Because if I'm a parent trying to decide whether or not I want to send my kid back, I want to know that the district has agreed to provide all these things and has all these rules in place. The other thing I want to really caution people on, and I don't want to get too much into all the details of the MOU. But when we talk about when COVID cases do happen in our schools, and Dr. Gallinger addressed this as well, we will have COVID cases. And the important thing to remember is there will be a lot of COVID cases that just someone went somewhere in the community, contracted COVID and works in one of our schools. And that is not the same as someone came to one of our schools and contracted COVID while they were at school. Obviously, we have to track both things, but I don't, I don't want people to be terrified, oh, my goodness, there was a COVID case at my school, therefore I have to pull my kids out or they need to shut down school or, or whatever. Because, and I'm going to get the term rung, the epidemiologically linked cases, right? We have to know that there is a link to the school community, not just someone contracted this who happens to work at school. It's two very different things. And, and I want to just say it here, and we need to say it about 10 times more because I know this is something that is very near and dear to the hearts of parents when they're entrusting us with their children. So we need, I wanted to make that clear. But, but I am excited about this agreement because as we move forward to other agreements to deal with other grade levels and whatever, we've done a lot of the groundwork that we don't have to repeat. We don't have to do this over. So I am very hopeful that as we move forward, we move forward much faster. I'm also very hopeful that people start staying home and doing all the things they're supposed to do and wear the masks so that we can get back under 5% and we can actually get our kids at school.
Thanks. Harlan, did you have something more?
I did. So I, I think that certainly the state lagged in getting their decision tree out. But I want to say that this MOU really just acknowledges that the decision tree is what we're going to use and utilize. And that hasn't changed since late July. I know the state, the county did lag in releasing their toolkit guidance. And Marnie and I were part of the director teams that had pestered them for like, starting with the end of the last school year, on getting this out and getting this out and having them do that. And, but I, I do want to give a nod to Jake and his team because I know that they started the acquisition for all the PPE and the risk mitigation strategies last spring. And in fact, I think they did it so early that they qualified for a significant amount of grant money through FEMA. So I do want to make sure that our community knows that this wasn't something that we waited till the fall to start. This started way long ago and I think that we were actually ready to start the school year with all this. But our superintendent.
That's accurate, Dr. Gallinger.
So our district has been at the forefront of being ready and being prepared. And I think that, you know, I'm excited about the opportunity for us to be able to become a vaccine distributor for workforce. The state has identified 173,000 K-12 employees that would be eligible for the second wave of vaccination, which would be very soon after the healthcare workers and long-term care facilities, which would be less than half of that. And the forecasted dosing or shipments is roughly in that 250,000 doses will be allocated to the state of Washington in the month of December. And so I'm part of the, our health systems team to do that implementation work. So I know that the vaccination process for our K-12 employees could potentially happen much sooner than I think we've all initially thought. And that's, I think the, if there's a silver lining for the rapid rate of spread of COVID in the fall, it's that it allowed the clinical trials for vaccinations to wrap up about two months earlier than we had all forecast. So, that being said, I do believe that that's the fastest pathway for getting our high school students back into school. And I would encourage our superintendent to think about having the conversations with all of our bargaining units on what is Isquah, schools look like post-vaccine? Not only just from when do we go back, but what is the risk mitigation in the era of post-vaccine? I'm assuming it's got to look different, but I don't think the state has even thought about that or worked on sort of, well, what mitigation strategies would we need if the overwhelming majority of the teachers and the students have had the vaccination? And that's work that we are going to start next Friday and our meeting with. And that's work that we are going to start next Friday in our meeting with Public Health, South King County, is really kickstart that conversation at the local level. Because I think the governor and the, because right now the superintendent of schools for the state have made it very clear. There's this circular argument, and if you haven't read the the Seattle Times student editorial that came out in the last day or two, it really talks about frustration as a student on, you know, we understand if we have sacrificed sports in our senior year, that's okay. But there's this weird circular argument where the state's saying that it's all to let local control and our local control, which is us, are saying like, no, we're beholden to the state. And the suits are like, so who actually is making the decisions? And I understand their frustration because we on that little merry-go-round feel the same way. So I think this is time for us to be able to elevate and escalate that conversation regarding the vaccine. And I'm excited about that. I think that if we had the potential to get our seniors, because the first, the vaccine is going to be eighteen and older. They're not either just starting the trials for twelve to seventeen-year-olds. So we're really only talking about the senior class. But if you think about it, if we're shooting for a 70% herd immunity, and I would expect that 70% of our seniors are by February eighteen. I I have no idea. I don't have a senior, and none of my grades are, kids are affected by this. But I think that it could be a realistic goal to get our senior class in for the last three or four months of school. And I think that should be something that we target. There's a lot of important things that happen in the spring of your senior year. And I think that we could all work together towards that. And I think that, you know, we're really focused on the farthest from educational justice, which we have done. And, you know, you still have some small groups to continue to work on. But I think the next step is in our school board has always been very consistent on preparing kids. And our mission statement is upon graduation. So I think now we pivot to actually fulfilling our mission statement and getting our kids ready to launch. And that should be our next focus. So I have more comments, but we'll pause there because I've taken my own airtime.
I was going to just say a few things. I wanted to piggyback off of what Suzanne said, and I think some others is that I understand. I totally understand the frustration of we have an agreement, but my kid's not getting back to school anytime soon. And that is, that's very real. What I would say is, but we have an agreement, and there's not another large district in King County that does. And hopefully, the whole goal is that this is a very foundational agreement. My anticipation, and I think one thing I want the public to know is we will continue to, we're not letting up on the gas. This doesn't mean we have an agreement. Now we're just going to take a break and not do anything until February. There are, there are still negotiations scheduled already over the next several of weeks. So we will continue these discussions and and look at these different areas that we've been talking about. How do we get a discussion about vaccinations? How do we get a discussion about our kids that need those additional supports that are in the higher grades, fourth grade and beyond that are not struggling? How do we still, we've had Executive Director Malish speak about what teaching and learning is done. So I know that some of you have said, you know, that we're not talking about that. We actually have been, and we continue to talk about what does remote learning look like? What kind of professional development are they getting? And I see an executive director Malish speaking. And I'm not sure who's sharing their screen. And if that's okay, I was gonna say, I'm not sharing my screen. So I think there is work that we've been doing. The last thing I wanted to say is someone else made a comment about we're not talking about how students aren't learning in this environment. And I have been very vocal. In fact, I think I've talked about it. My phrase isn't that they're teachers, they are facilitators of learning. And as much they may be following pedagogy, if they're not facilitating the learning piece, it's focused on the outcomes. So Rich, since you did kind of put your screen up, and I'll do the ask to unmute. Oh, it looks like you can unmute yourself. I am interested, probably one of the things I'm wondering is there are several universities who have done online learning for a long time. And so this was not as much of a move for them, and students are more successful. So I've been getting questions like, why can't they do what the colleges are doing? So maybe you can give a short, brief, I know this is off the cuff, discussion about how those are different and then what your staff is doing to make sure students are are getting to that learning piece and how we're bringing them up in that.
Okay, well, I honestly was not prepared to talk about comparison between us and colleges. I I will say that our choice of Canvas as our learning management system at the secondary was partly informed by the success both in the K twelve environment and the post-secondary environment. We have tried to design coursework that is rigorous and pairing students for their next steps in learning, while also adjusting to the kind of social, emotional and learning needs and styles of of K twelve students. Because it is, it is different than adult learners. So I I can't speak because I, first, I would say that I really appreciate the really nice comments about about the teaching and learning staff. And they have worked tirelessly to to try to find resources and support teachers. But nothing happens without the amazing creativity and commitment of our teachers to try out new things. And, you know, I I appreciate Superintendent Thiele pointing out that sometimes we'll try things and it'll work with for some and not work for others, whether it's, whether it's silliness and creativity and being being a little whimsical to try to draw in students, or whether it's I'm trying to be very creative with their course design. What I would also say is that I've really appreciated our our school administrators of have also jumped in to trying to find ways to to rally our team conversations in the schools to support new ways of engaging students and new ways of of creating a school community. And I just want to give a shout out to our principals for that. Our elementary, I I can say that our our coaches, our instructional coaches have been out there modeling teaching, sitting with teachers, giving feedback, helping to design instruction, meeting regularly with our our teaching and learning staff to inform the instructional tools we're giving at elementary. So we just, in the last couple of weeks, of course, with the change of trimester, gave a robust set of resources out to our elementary teachers to help them. And we really tried to apply the learnings from the first trimester as we built the second trimester of learning activities and resources for our teachers. We have been really informed by the professional work out there of Fisher, Frye, and Hattie. They they immediately came out with the distance learning playbook, latest round of professional development we're doing is around the assessment playbook for distant learning. How do you know students are learning? And we've heard that, we've heard that from our community, we've heard that from our school board. We, assessment has been a real challenge for us. But we have been doing our due diligence to figure out how do we measure learning? So we're not just doing teaching, but we're measuring learning. And, you know, I, the collaboration between TLS and our teachers and trying to support and provide ideas and experiment and learn and grow. We are really turning our attention towards how do we measure learning? So whether that's through assessments, as you know, at the elementary, we have the iReady for math, which is helping us to really monitor math achievement. We are looking at, we have our math teachers at the secondary have embraced Savas and Alex to help us monitor learning and math to make sure students are on track, to stay on track for their college readiness, college and career readiness in mathematics. We continue to engage with our ELA teachers as well about how do we help monitor that K eight readiness? Our students arrive at high school ready with the language arts, reading, writing skills to be successful when they get to high school. So there is a lot of resources, a lot of exploration, a lot of experimentation, building off of the professional literature that's coming out about remote learning as the whole country is wrestling with, how do we do remote learning better? And we are trying to build off the best, the best of the best in this country as they're they're giving advice. We're trying to grab that advice and create professional development for our for our teachers. And I will say that I I have yet to talk to a secondary teacher that isn't trying their heart out to to figure out how to engage successfully with students. And I really appreciate the risks that are being made by teachers. You know, my my sons are at Liberty and and, you know, so we get to watch tunes with Tanner where our Liberty teachers are singing and sending videos out to the to students and parents to try to bring a little interpersonal connection out to the students and out to our families. So there's a lot of creativity and and some may may not, that may not connect with everybody. But if it draws in a student to smile and feel connected for a moment to their their teachers, I think it's a success. Whether it's everybody's favorite thing or not. So I just want to, I just want to throw that out there that we, I I do feel like we are getting better as a system. We're throwing out professional development, we're collaborating, we're trying to measure learning. And we are committed to this work and will continue to work tirelessly to make remote learning better until we can get students in the classroom. I hope that gives a little bit of background, and I can always prepare more in the future.
And I think Director Moore has a question.
Yeah, I have a question for Rich before he he turns off his video. So Rich, help me understand, we had a couple of parents that mentioned having teachers that said some unit was just too hard to teach remotely, and they're just not going to do it. So help me understand how how this is working in classes? What?
Yeah, I I hate to, I hate to try to speak to a specific situation that I may not know about. But we did go through each math course and say, within that math course, what what mathematical knowledge do students need to be prepared for the future? And there were, not very many, but there were a few units, and there were several lessons that we were able to say, you know what? That what that specific learning isn't essential. So if we can fit it in, great. But if we can't fit it in, that's a place where we can make space to focus on the essential learnings of mathematics to get them ready for that next course and their future learning in mathematics. So yes, are students getting a little bit less of the data analysis and statistics sort of work that is sometimes folded into our our algebra courses? Yes, but they are getting those core algebraic and number sense skills that they're going to need to be successful and be prepared for Algebra II, pre-calculus, calculus and beyond for their career. We really committed to making sure that they would be ready for the next course. But yes, we did cut content out of courses because we knew that remote learning would not be as efficient as it is new to us this year.
So and and for them, for the folks wondering about math, my daughter has a Gibson, all the Gibson Act students use Alex as their math course. And she did geometry, Algebra II, and pre calc online. So, you know, I know what that system is, and it builds upon itself. I always say our Gibson Act students have the best knowledge and understanding because there are constant checks on previously taught concepts. And if you miss them, you have to do those those topics all over again. And then you, so as you go, you could be taking your final piece, and it's going to be looking, hey, do you remember this that you worked on back in September? And if they don't, they go through that topic all over again. So I think having that kind of tool and having students have access to it, I think, is important.
Right. Are all secondary students, do they have access to Alec?
At the middle school, we chose to use Alex because it it spanned the Common Core six, seven, eight, and into the Algebra geometry. In the second, in the high schools, we're using the Savas electronic resources that come with our curriculum. So it's very aligned to the the textbook that we we have as a curriculum. So it's, it is a little different in middle school and high school. And yes, Alex does have these knowledge checks that teachers can do, and many of our teachers are using them on a, I've I've heard as much as a weekly basis to try to check to make sure students are making progress. Our teachers really are committed to measuring that learning and making sure that it's not just students completing work, but learning.
Harlan.
So I appreciate that the teachers are seeking to to assess that, but they're not actually doing closed-loop communication to let us as parents know. And so when I have a student who has math twice a week and it's algebra, and, you know, she tells me like, oh, I had a test or, oh, I mean, short of that, I'm I'm not getting much. So and I'm not even asking for much. So I, but I I'm curious to know, like, and my fear is, is like, last spring, there's clearly been a lot of deficits that we've had to fill this year. And so I really worry about geometry next year.
You should be able to sign up for a email alert, and it will tell you how many topics she's worked on, how much, what percent she's at, how many hours she spent on it.
It it might be a little different than at Gibson Act because we're using it more as just the assessment system rather than the instruction system.
He's talking about middle school, though.
Yeah, with Alex. Yeah, with Alex, it's more, it's being used more as an assessment check and knowledge check than it is for actual instruction. We are still using our core curriculum at the middle school as the instruction. So it will be a little bit different than at Gibson Act. But, you know, I I appreciate, I appreciate that that feedback, a feedback, Director Gallinger, and something that we can kind of share with the teams as we are working with them. We are also currently working with everybody, all of our departments of how will we, how will we measure the ultimate learning at the end of the year? What kind of assessment can we give to make sure that we understand kind of the final outcomes of courses during this year?
Any other questions or comments? Harlan.
Can I I've heard, and I appreciate the work that's done on the pods for our high school students. I do want to hear sort of what is the plan for our our middle school students? Meaning everything was canceled that was outdoor last spring. So even if our teachers don't feel comfortable, if their coaches are, now is the time essentially for us to start recruiting volunteer community coaches for running soccer and track and those sort of middle school sports that typically happen in the springtime. So spring is around the corner.
Yeah, Director Gallinger, great question. Right now, this week, we are, actually, I was working with my principals this week regarding listing out plans to work on various in-building supports for, you know, students further from educational justice and working on pods essentially, and just drafting plans for how we could bring students in for academic support. We have been focusing this fall on clubs and activities, and it had been relatively successful with engaging students at that level. But to your point, that is kind of the next step. As we begin to bring high school students back, it will be to identify appropriate outside activities for middle school students to access that. And I think that's kind of the next thing around the corner, if you will, for those identifying. I think first of all, it's going to be incumbent that we identify the what activities and the amount of interest in those outside activities and then move on to draft those plans. And I really follow the lead of the high school to identify if coaches are available and or, you know, willing. And if not, if we, you know, seek out some sort of volunteer program.
I just think that now is the time for us to start seeking that out. So if you're in the community members and you need to re-change your schedule for like March through June, that you would have the chance to do that. So I I I just think that it also would give our students something to look forward to in the spring. And this is, speaking with my healthcare hat on, this is a very long winter, and we're only a few weeks into it. And so I think that hope part is a really, really important part when we think about our our whole child, the mental health and social emotional parts that our district is so passionate about. I think we want to model and give those opportunities. So anything that we can do for that at all levels, but certainly our middle and high schools would be really, really beneficial.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree more, Director Gallinger. And to that point, when we look down the road towards springtime, that will be hopefully a very good time, you know, weather-wise, but also to give kids things to look forward to. And, you know, we'll have to kind of flesh out what those plans can look like and the number of students and families interested in those plans. I'm very happy that we are moving to a place where we'll be opening our facilities for outside user groups as well. I think that will Um, I think that will um definitely uh be something for kids to look forward to, but point well taken. Um, and that will be in process.
Okay. I, I know Sydney had her hand up and I know she also has to leave at seven, so I don't know if she wants to ask her question.
Oh, sorry, wasn't a question. I was going to say the start of the pods at high school. I can tell you this week, at least in my own home, if I may, if I'm a part of the, I am part of that group has been quite positive. So I was just hearing that I, I just think that's a great start.
Great. And then Dr. Gallagher, I did not want to cut you off.
No, I absolutely want to respect Sydney's timeframe. So if she needs to go or say what she needs to say. But we'll say that, you know, Marnie, through our work on, I, I, through the Washington State School District Association, I chair the Large Schools Caucus, and I had shared this with our superintendent. I don't know if I shared it with the rest of the board, but um, the like twenty-five largest school districts represent what is it, like forty percent of the school children in the state, something like that? And Director Maraldo, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but we queried them on sort of where are they, are they at in their reopening? And I think that zero of them were providing middle school or high school instruction. Is that what you remember, Superintendent? So um us moving into providing elementary education would be absolutely consistent with what we're seeing across the state. And I'm not saying that that is good, but what I'm saying is that is market, whether we like it or not.
Yep, yeah, that's my understanding as well, um, Director Gallagher. And in, and in fact, many in our specific region, our, our private high schools haven't, have been mostly remote learning as well. And some of our private schools, even down to the elementary level, have recently gone back into remote learning, given the current activity with the virus in our community. But um, you know, I just, again, I just want to say we desperate, we work with children and have put our careers working with your children. And we hate seeing what the isolation is doing to them, you know, it, it, it nothing hurts me uh more down to the very marrow of my bones than that. And that's why my team is working hard. If, if we can't bring them back in for in-person instruction, the order is find something. And you know, I appreciate that um buildings are starting to get creative with trying to do things um that are yet, you know, COVID mitigated because we know we have to one uh be the role models for COVID mitigation. Because we also know that it's our behaviors that will help us drive that number down so that we can all get to a place where we want to be um eventually. So um, we're going to continue to do this and I, you know, uh, my heart goes out uh to those secondary students. And I've had numerous, numerous conversations with students. So I know the pain that they're feeling. Um, and I, I just, you know, it's a difficult and challenging, it's, it, these are difficult problems to try to solve and, and we're going to just keep working on them. And and uh I know it's frustrating, but we're not going to give up. And uh hopefully, you know, we are starting to see a, a few more things that are happening and we're going to continue in that vein. And um, I am, I remain hopeful about the vaccine as well. I do see a light at the end of the tunnel. And I know that we just, right now is a time that we kind of have to hunker down. And um, but that doesn't mean we stop working. We just keep, we're, we keep doing it. And as I believe uh President Maraldo or, or someone on the board noted, we already have set bargaining sessions. I think the next three bargaining sessions are already scheduled. We are, and, and will be happening in the coming days and weeks. So we, we're just going to keep working on these problems. We've solved one. Yay. I want to celebrate that a little bit. And now we're moving on.
And I want to tread lightly with my next comment because I do want to celebrate the progress that our superintendent and his team has made. And I do want to appreciate the collaboration with um IEA uh and our teachers. Uh, but I don't want to lose sight of the impacts that closures had on our community. And I know that our district is looking at that. And I think as a board, we're going to get some more reporting on that. Um, particularly with the engagement survey, because I think one thing, it's not just teaching and learning, which I know that uh Director Maraldo speaks of frequently, but it's also about the engagement part. And I didn't really appreciate that until I see my youngest child and it's like here with all of her peer group as well. It's about not just kids who used to love school, who like school is like hmm, a bad word now. And I think that that's really, really different. And that's something that's, the impact of that is huge. And we see that translate into my day job, where I, I think I forwarded to the board. The CDC just published a bunch of data that showed not only is it what I expected, which to see, which is the secondary, that's what I experiences are teenagers are having this impact of mental health. But to see that nationally, and we're seeing it less locally, but the elementary students are equally seeing this impact that's forcing them to come to the ER for it. So um, I think that engagement piece is really important. And I know that I'll be eager to see that information. And I hope that's something that can be sort of built into some one of our ends or ELs, because I think engagement data is important for us to sort of get a temperature track of our community. I think we also can't lose sight of the learning loss. And I know that our teaching and learning teams have been doing above and beyond um to support our, our teachers and our students. But I think we need to acknowledge that learning loss is there and to not pretend like it's not, and not that anyone on, on this board or district is pretending that. But I, I think that sometimes it can get, get lost and that that's what we're all here for. And this district has been passionate about our students reaching their highest potential. And when we see that, we're usually talking their highest academic potential. And I think that now as we can look towards that light at the end of the tunnel, we need to pivot back to sort of those guiding principles. Um, and then I think about the mental health impacts. And I think that those are the biggest ones that I'm seeing in my day job, that I know, I know we're all seeing experiences. I think that's what's driving a lot of the parents who come to these meetings that wouldn't normally come to these meetings is because they're seeing it in their own households. And I think that all of us with kids are seeing it. And I think we just need to acknowledge that. And I know that I asked for a report from our superintendent last month about um for him to gather up sort of what, how, how are our students across our community reaching out and able to access the mental health resources that we have? And are we seeing a different trend in the chief complaints of what's coming through? And are they actually having the same number of visits that they did pre-COVID? Uh, type of thing to see what is the utilization since this board has invested so much money in mental health resources that we partner with Swedish on. But I think hearing that information would be really helpful for us. So I think that that's going to be forthcoming.
And that is coming too. Um, uh, Director Gallagher did bring that forward. Um, and our Director of Student Intervention Services, who oversees our counseling staff, is actually preparing a report for us that has information about that as well as some 504 information. And um, I, I anticipate that we will have that on um our early January um agenda, board agenda.
That's great. And all this culminates into our twenty twenty-two educational programs levy. And for me, sitting here, knowing what our whole world is experiencing, certainly our community has experienced and, and the, the true suffering that's going out across our community. Not just social, emotional, mental, educational, financial, you name it, it's there. I can't in good faith support moving forward with a levy until I see our our community have a chance to truly pass it. And for me, that benchmark would be having students in our buildings at least twelve months before I could in good faith support any levy going forward from the, from this board. And I know I may be the minority voice and that's okay. Um, but I think that for me is an important marker. And I know that not every student may return if we open this spring when it's appropriate to do so. But certainly students need the opportunity to. And so if that's April first, then I would be happy to see us move forward a levy by April of two thousand twenty-two. Whatever that timeframe is. Um, but I think that we need a good year of really demonstrating to our community what Izakua education is, because we do an outstanding job. And that's thank you to our teachers and to Ron and his team of doing that. But I want us to have the best chance of success. And I think for me, that is going to be for us to demonstrate with a good year under our belt that, hey, Izakua education has returned better than ever. And uh that's my hope.
Thanks. So any other comments from the board? I just wanted to share my final thoughts is um, I, I again have to go back to, um, you know, it was over eighty percent of the comments we heard today were great, you got an MOU, but my kid's still not going back to school. And I want parents to know, I want the community to know, I do hear that. The whole board hears that. To me, it's like getting your wisdom teeth out before getting braces on. It's painful to get your br- wisdom teeth out. And guess what? You still have to go through the pain of having your braces and you don't have, you're not, don't have the end result. And I think it's that kind of frustration that we're still not at the end result. And we don't have any students beyond who we've had for the past um six weeks or so, five weeks or so, getting into the classroom. And that is really frustrating. I'm hopeful that these negotiations will move forward and I would challenge our teachers' union to help us get our secondary kids in school. Because as I see it, if we continue at this pace, I don't envision secondary getting back into school this year. So I would like to be proven wrong. I would, I will definitely eat my words in public if we get our kids, our secondary kids back in school this year, but I don't see how it's going to happen. And we have to have a plan. And I think we've discussed this before. This is a first step in our plan. And well before we want to execute, we want to keep pushing to make sure we have a plan to bring our secondary kids back into school, a plan to bring our fourth and fifth graders back into school. Where is that plan? And we're still moving there. So there's a couple of things we need to do beforehand. But um, I think we need to continue to push to get those plans um out to our public as soon as possible so that when the time comes, we can execute immediately. And I think that's going to be very important. And we have to know by the end of January, what's going to happen in September. And I know my push is come September, every student back in school. Anything less than that, in my opinion, is going to be a failure on our part. So to the public, I know tonight was disappointing. I think we're moving forward and this board is going to continue to push. So on with that, I've gone thirty-five minutes over, my apologies. Um, thank you for those that are in, in attendance for our public. These are our public board meetings. These are our how we do business. So these conversations between the board members cannot happen unless they happen in either a specific executive session or in front of you all. So thank you for joining us in our business meetings and we will see you next week. Um, this has been shown broadcast live on our YouTube channel. You can always go back to it in case there was anything you wanted to miss or listen to again. And so I'll say what most YouTubers do, smash that like back button, um, subscribe and hit the notification bell and you'll know when we go live with any of our items. Um, there was also a mention of the boundary review committee. That's also on our YouTube page. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting and thank you.
Good night.
Good night.